Five mile realignment plan, which originally that realignment was going to go below the lower reservoir, the new reservoir. And Mark Bassett said, can you put it above the reservoir so that the visitors and riders can not, you know, be riding past this big, you know, reservoir as they look up, but actually could be higher up in the valley? Because they don't want to be low down because they get a good view of the valley where they are now. So higher up, they get a better view of the valley and they look down on this beautiful, albeit artificial lake with the stars reflecting upon it. So, and we were able to accommodate that so far in the design. And that's why, that's, so this is what that realignment would look like. The black is the current alignment, the green would be the realigned section. And that will be fine tuned depending on the final design of that lower reservoir. It could be moved a little bit one way or the other. We don't know yet. So, but that's the basic, the concept right now. So they have two primary concerns. One is affecting the experience of visitors, which is very important to this community. And two is the land, as has been mentioned here, the land under the railroad, City of Ely owns that. And by congressional action and any realignment, they don't want it put on BLM land. They want to own that land underneath the, the new alignment. So, um, so we addressed concern number one, I mentioned that. And number two, we discussed it with the BLM, who we've been talking with for a couple of years now, about a land swap. So that the land under the current alignment becomes BLM and the land under the five mile realigned section, the City of Ely owns it, just like they currently do. So that would be addressed in that way. And then we, we, we discussed that with the, we, with the railroad and then proposed the MOU, the work memorandum of understanding to work forward together. And that, the terms of that are being looked at right now by the city's attorney and we'll just continue down that, that as we go. So economic benefits, we have to conduct economic impact studies. We haven't done that yet. We're about to commission the first phase of that. And also as part of the FERC licensing, we have to do a socioeconomic impact study that talks about jobs and all those things. So we're eager to get those questions answered. What we have is some numbers. So in the study and development phase, I mean, we're already now bringing up some economic benefit because there, there are going to be a lot of hotel nights spent here by all the people coming here to do studies over the next few years on this project. So we begin that, we also engage local expertise like BJ as much as possible in that, in those efforts. Construction phase estimated, again, the number could be higher, 300 to 500 jobs over a period of five years. Mostly skilled labor. The advantage you have here in that regard is a lot of that expertise needed for this project, constructing it. You already have heavy equipment, earth moving, tunneling, that kind of expertise is here in this region. So it's not like you have to bring in, you know, 90% of, you know, some other sites that, that are being revoked out there. Huge numbers of people are just imported workers to do that. We may not, you know, completely do that. Um, there's been talk about, and I don't have a slide on it here, but it touched on in the other handout, workforce housing is a question that comes up. Where do all these people stay? Something we're exploring, something we're going to be looking at all the different options, whether it's man camps or, you know, trailer parks and fifth wheels or whatever it takes to minimize negative impacts and maximize positive impacts for the. And then the long-term operation, I guess, well, you know, one of the good things about these types of projects is they don't require the number of employees like a coal plant does, 500 people. It's maybe 20 to 25 full-time employees, but it is full-time employees making good income, spending it here and for the hundred-year life of the project. Taxes. So we have the capital investment, 2.2 billion dollars, which is roughly, um, seven, six or seven times the investment of like Steptoe Valley Wind Project. So the value is much greater. What we don't know yet is how this project will be treated from a tax perspective because you got this big civil portion of it, which is the, is the tunnels, the reservoirs and all that. You got the equipment portion, the personal property portion alone is 800 million dollars. We don't know how the real property portion of it is going to be treated. We don't know if it's going to be sexually assessed or locally assessed, um, and, and other aspects that affect that. But, you know, we're pretty confident that with a project that size, that at least several million dollars a year of revenue over the, the 80-year lifespan of the project. It's, it's going to be a significant amount of money. We just, the analysis has to be done to quantify that exactly. And that's, that's with or without an abatement, renewable energy. We don't know. It's something we're looking into. So progress highlights. So we have, uh, we did our reconnaissance engineering in 2019. Pre-feasibility was 2020. Now we're about to kick off what's called a detailed feasibility engineering study, which will run us to the probably early 2021, 2022 before that's done. That, that helps narrow down the project cost and refine some of the features of the Interconnection agreement is secured. So we have to know that we have a place in line in the transmission system. So we have to file, we had to file with NV Energy into Robinson Summit. The first 750 megawatts, which was the original size we're looking at, we have an agreement signed with them to lock up that capacity. So we know we can deliver the power on the system should the project be built. We have a, there's another application in for the final 250 megawatts because we opted to go for a higher size, bigger sized project, better economy of scale. So that is in process. FERC pre-application document, that's the document I was talking about, done last year, the background, the studies that are going to be proposed to be done for the project was filed, FERC accepted it. It was a very good document. They granted us the process we wanted to use called TLP. We don't need to go into details of it. And then required joint agency meeting was held here in September. Initial borehole investigation plan for spring, summer 2021, that's, we need BLM permits to be able to do the boreholes. And it's not, the complicated part is not the holes themselves, which is only 100 by 100 foot footprint. It's the access roads, a little bit that we might need to blade to get to some of these spots. That's the part that needs the permits. And so that's what's taking, going to take a little while to get through. Field work for the license application, so all those studies I mentioned, wildlife, biological, cultural, all those studies to be conducted. We've commissioned a firm to do those throughout this year. We already began some cultural field work in the fall. BLM right-of-way application submitted. We did, uh, submit a special use permit application to the city slash county, I think I wrote that right. City county planning director. The, and so that, that process has begun. So maybe you can update where we are in that after this. And then the water agreement with county. And the MOU that we're proposing with Nevada Northern and City of Ely is in, I wouldn't say it's in negotiation yet, they're reviewing the terms that it had proposed. Then it'll be in negotiation, hopefully. And the next steps, finalize water agreement, take B permit from the BLM for the borehole investigations. BLM start processing the right-of-way application. Launch that third phase engineering study, but we can't really do that until the borehole results start in. They can do some surface studies, but until they know what's underground, it's hard to fine tune the rest of the design. Confirm location of where we want to do water withdrawal. Study the impacts and apply to the state engineer for authorization to be able to do what we're proposing. And continue working with the railroad and the city. File our FERC exhibits. And so that's, that's kind of where we are.
Can you back up there please so I can get your whole number and addresses, please?
Oh, yes, yes. And then, and then some copies of this are on the back and it's also in that handout.
A D and S business card by Jan.
Oh, yeah. I can ask you one.
Thank you.
Is that it with your presentation, Matt?
That's it for my presentation.
Please, one, come forward with some of the other questions or some of the answers if you want us to.
Um, I think I could, thank you, Matthew. Luigi Reste again, R Plus Energies. And so Matthew has been the developer and technicals on this project. I'm more on the business side, just so you guys know, you know, put it in context. I, I think there was a couple of questions that maybe his presentation didn't explicitly answer that I can put some more context around or I can, we can wait for, for questions. I'm happy to do either one.
Why don't you go ahead?
Proactively. So, um, one question was about the railroad realignment and the patented land ownership that is underneath the railroad tracks and that that is, it took a congressional act to get. We recognize that that was a very hard, um, you know, process to get where the city and the railroad actually have fee simple title in that land. We don't want to jeopardize that in any way. So first of all, we don't want to jeopardize that. There is a process to do in exchange and part of what we have done and we've worked through, we've been, we're trying to work through with the, with the city and with the railroad is this MOU, a memorandum of understanding that would outline the process of how we would help to get this realignment and get fee title on the property that BLM currently has for the realignment. So the MOU is really intended to say, we as the developers will incur and take all of the costs with undertaking the effort of doing this realignment. And so we don't have the MOU completed yet because it's, it's, we're waiting for legal review from the railroad to get that done. The steps that would occur then after we have the MOU is that we will, when the engineers first confirm their realignment route, we would share that with the railroad. We would then go survey that new railroad, the five miles that Matthew described, that would be surveyed, that would then be studied from an environmental, biological, cultural, historical, all of the studies that need to be done to do that. As part of that, we would file with BLM what's called an SF 299 right-of-way. So it's a federal process that you have to go, you have to provide all this information, the studies that I just described. We file an SF 299 right-of-way. They grant the right-of-way eventually after they do their studies and everything and the EA has done, you know, environmental assessment. They would grant a right-of-way. And then, so we would, so we now would have the BLM right-of-way, but that's still BLM property that's a lease interest effectively. What we would do as part of the project, assuming everything else goes, goes well and the project gets greenlit and we're going to build the whole project, what we would then do is actually build the new railroad, the realignment on the right-of-way that is BLM property. And once the railroad is completed and connected and it's still BLM right-of-way property, they would then decommission the, the existing track. And that decommission would happen. They would start using the upper realigned track and then the land swap would happen because the amount of total acreage that is affected would remain the same. So the width of the easement that is currently a fee title land ownership would remain the same. And what they would do is we would decommission the old track, take the track out, they would, the city and the, and the railroad would then change ownership between BLM and the city for one parcel for the other. So BLM has the same amount of acreage under their, their management and the city retains the same amount of acreage under fee simple title. So there, so at no point would there be a case where there would be exposure of not having the fee title under the railroad. So that, those are the steps related to the railroad. MOU, lots of engineering studies, environmental, right-of-way with the BLM, realignment and transfer of title. Does anybody have any questions about that? It's going to be a lengthy process and not easy. It, it does affect SHIBO as well, historical society, historical, um, state society and federal, just to some degree that the railroad is aligned. So that's on the railroad. On housing, the house, the question about housing has come up several times. As Matthew described in the presentation, we're still really early on the engineering side of the project, so we don't know exactly, is it going to be one crew working, is it going to be two crews working, are we going to do split shifts with 24-hour, like we would do at the mine where you have, you know, two 12-hour shifts working around the clock? We don't know, we don't know what the configuration of the construction crews are going to be. So we don't really have an accurate number of how many people will be here, but the 300 to 500 people is probably a safe range and they will be spread out between doing civil work on the lower reservoir, civil work on the upper reservoir. And then as the presentation demonstrated, a large portion of this project is underground. So we'll be tunneling, shafting underground and the crews will be working underground. So, um, but as far as housing specifically goes, you know, our first objective would be to utilize the, all the resources that are available here, where it's the, whether it's the travel lodges or the any, if there is any vacancy housing. Um, the second step would be, which we've had conversations with some of the commissioners is updating some of the travel camp areas here where for hookups for fifth wheels because travelers do like to travel in their fifth wheel and hookup. Um, if we needed to expand and add another trailer park camp, that would be the first objective. I think that's the most beneficial for the community because it would live past the construction of the project and could still be utilized for different events. Um, and then if we needed to build some kind of man camps, that would be part of it as well. But I think as far as sequence goes would be utilizing what you have, improving the, the other steps and then adding another travel camp because I think that's the, I guess, getting the best. And then the third, the end would be a man camp. So we just don't know that completely yet. I, I want to clarify as well that we did, there was a mention that we were on the planning commission the other night and nobody showed up, no representative of the project. I think that was a comment that you made. That was because we, what we did as developers, what we put together, what we call a conditionally used permit or a special use permit. The special use permit, um, and again, we're energy developers across many jurisdictions and many states, so we follow a similar process. But this special use permit outlines the whole project and the impacts that it would have at an early stage for what we know today. And we submitted that to the, to the planning commission with the intention that it becomes a public process. It has the ability to have the officials and the community weigh in on conditions precedent to build the project. How are we going to address housing? How are we going to address waste, waste management? How are we going to address the night skies here? Like different items that the project needs to adhere to from a community perspective. So we submitted the, the special use permit so that these conditions precedent, CPs as we refer to them, could be placed on the project in an early stage. I mean, I think the best example would be the night skies. Preserving the dark skies here is a really important aspect of Ely. And so, you know, we would expect that the, a condition to building the project would be you can't have floodlights up here that are going to light, you know, from here to McGill. That makes sense, right? So that would be something that we would expect. Ultimately, that, that SUP was pulled from the commission, from the agenda because we're the applicant, but we're not the landowner. BLM is the landowner for the whole project and they didn't take the application as being deemed complete because BLM hadn't signed on it. BLM's not going to sign on the agreement yet because we are going through, as I just described with the railroad, we're going through that process for the project itself right now with BLM. We filed an SF 299 as a right-of-way. We're going through the studies to secure the property for the site, but until we have that, they're not going to sign as an applicant on the SUP. So ultimately that topic was tabled, but it's very much open for the commission and the community to put conditions for the project to be successful on the table and we're open to that. The second thing that we, we did with the planning commission was we submitted what we've referred to as a, a community development agreement. And what, what, our intention of this was that we, we proactively come to the community and say, we recognize for, if it weren't for this project, you guys wouldn't be having these meetings. There would be no legal impact, there would be no railroad realignment impact, there would, there, you know, life would go on as normal. We are creating an impact. So our community development agreement was put forward to say, if this project has a fiscal impact to any element of the community, whether it's the roads, road improvements, which is a big issue that comes up here before the commission quite frequently, that the project will be responsible for it. As with like, with the MOU with the railroad, that we will be responsible for carrying the cost of making, of doing the work that needs to be done for this project. So that was deemed not necessary and pulled. So, but we, we have made the effort and I think it's outstanding. We did talk with the county engineer, the county engineer on the roads and we have an agreement that when we start to impacting the roads, that we will come up with an agreement that says, you know, Duck Creek has got four miles of dirt road back there. We don't want the local people out there being affected by our traffic. So what are we going to do to keep the quality of the road as it is or improve it so it's for the betterment of the community? And that would be something that we'll put in place when the time comes. But we're, we're open for whenever that time comes. So, so we're, we're really trying to be very good, you know, community members. They, the other thing is the assignment of the water rights. I think this topic has come up a couple of times and I just want to restate that in the agreements, the legal agreements that we have, which have been thoroughly reviewed by legal counsel on both the city, the county and our side, is that there's an express use concept in these water agreements, that they can only be used for the express purposes of our agreement, which is that it's for the benefit of the pump storage hydro project, which then has an economic positive impact for the community. We in no way can transfer or assign the, the water rights to somebody else. The intention of the ability to assign the project is a greater concept that as we go to financing and the project moves forward, the project may, we own the project today, but the banks are going to come in and we'll need to assign those, you know, part of the project and not the water specifically because the water will be tied to the project company, White Pine Pump Storage. But there will be assignment for, you know, it will occur in the next hundred years. So that's the intention of that.
Do you have intentions of leveraging the water rights in financing?
No, not at all. No. The, the project, so all of these projects, there was another question that was raised to somebody today, we got an email about who owns the project right now. And maybe this is a good, to answer your question. The way we develop projects, and this is common with all projects of, of large scale like this, is we set up a special purpose vehicle, an SPV, that is an LLC, it's a limited liability company. We do that at the very beginning. And so the FERC preliminary permit that Matthew described that we have, that's in the name of the project company, White Pine Pump Storage. And that is an asset that has now been in the name of that LLC and that becomes an asset. As we go through the development, the engineering studies, the study is done in the name of the project and that becomes a project asset. The water's rights would be a project asset. And what we're trying to do is build a project that is financeable ultimately, that we can build, that has value to the community and that all of those would be kept in that special purpose vehicle. The, the special purpose vehicle is owned 100%, it's a manager member managed, 100% owned project company that is owned by R Plus Hydro. R Plus Hydro is then owned by R Plus Energies and we in turn are owned by the gardener company out of Salt Lake City as described. So.
So at $40 a share, once they're booked on your books, what's the asset that you guys will utilize for financing?
We won't use, attribute any dollar value to the water rights. What we will say is that we have an interconnection agreement, we have the BLM right-of-way, the land right-of-way, we have the, the, um, the environmental, the engineering, the studies, all, everything that goes into that. Then we'll say for this 2.2 billion dollar investment we have, ultimately first we have to get P, FERC approval, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission approval on the license, which is going to take three years. And then we have to have somebody be able to buy the benefits of the project. So after that happens, then we would have a financeable project and there would be no dollar value associated with the water rights.
But what are we considering the benefits of the project, that's broad?
That, the water would be included in that.
So that is a benefit.
I think he's asking the benefit, the, the power, what is it, what is the product of this product? Is the power that it generates in the energy storage services that, we have to find a, we have to have a customer, a utility scale customer who is paying for that service and all of the pieces have to be there to make it workable.
Do, do these companies, do your companies have any of these projects completed and in operation today? Do we know an actual cost?
Can I have a, I'm sorry, just for the record, could you state your name?
Shane Cooper with Titan Constructors. I'm sorry, I should, uh, thank you.
So the 43 projects that are built in the United States were all built before 1993 because it was a different era of energy development and they were all built by utilities or by the US government. And they were built to take nuclear energy and shift it to peaking. And that was a whole different generation. So there haven't been any built in the US since then. Now the need is coming up again for this type of project. So we, we were created to do this specific type of project now, and we're leading in the country in this particular, but, um, and so there are a few projects, there are a very small number of developers who are working on this type of project. We're one of them. And, um, you know, we think a few of these will be built in the, in the next, you know, 10 years in the United States, maybe 10 or 15, and maybe we'll be developing, rebuilding some of those. But, um, so to answer your question, we have not. But the engineering firms that we work with, um, all have global hydro power experience. So we bring that in as needed. And then we internally have the capability to do the, the management of those, having, with Luigi having built, you know, thousands of, you know, 100, 100 megawatt solar projects and 200 megawatt solar projects and wind projects. So that experience is there and we're trying to be one of the first projects to be over the finish line in this country in 30 years.
And, and why is a purchase necessary versus some type of lease or royalty on the rights so that the White Pine County residents retain the water rights themselves?
So, so.
And receive benefit in that aspect?
To talk specifically about the water rights, which I think is your, where your real question is directed. Um, our intent, so we have two steps or three steps that we've talked about. One is the licensing of the water rights for construction purposes and initial fill. And then the, the other is that after that is the purchase of the 750, which would have to be separated, and I don't know what you'd call it, fractionalized from the other, from the permit. So that would happen after the end of construction, that we would buy the 750 acre feet of water. You can imagine this is a 100-year power plant effectively is what it is, or 100-year battery. We can't have, be in a situation where in 30 years, somebody decides to not provide the water on a two and a half billion dollar project with 100-year life. So that's the reason for the need to buy the 750 water acre feet. For the, for the license of the water rights for construction and fills, you know, we put the $50,000 out and the, over 10 years is $500,000 that we expect between now and then. And that's where the $40 acre foot came in. You know, we're not opposed to having some other structure for the mechanism of how this county gets paid, but it seemed like a fair and reasonable approach for all parties. And I think 750 acre feet reps, represents 3% or something?
3% of the county's 225,000.
Over 50 years. Yeah. So that, yeah, that's.
So that, yeah, that 750 over 50 years is, would be 3% of that 25,000 over 50 years.
And what type of mechanism is in place if the project doesn't go through? Do the water rights revert back and how do they revert back?